Thank you, Dr. McFarland, roll call please.
Cracky. Smith. Tealyn.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger. Foel. Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you, moving on to the first item on our agenda, public comment and recognition. Do we have any public comment forms? Perfect, moving on then to new and miscellaneous business items, item E1, information items E1A, Evidence of Effective Schools with Ms. Suzanne Kramer and Mr. Casey Hughes, I'll turn it over to you. Sorry, I got so excited I skipped Mr. Ray for his comments.
Thank you. So I want, I want to go back a little bit to the strategic plan that, that we approved. We're entering into our final year of the strategic plan. But this work that we're doing now connects to the results and the norms of using real-time data to inform instruction. It goes to our norm of leadership and being data-driven in decision-making. And as part of this first journey that we started together back in August, I just want to remind everybody of what we've already shared this year. So on August 7th, we provided the class of 2021 graduation follow-up as a receipt of reports. September 11th, sorry, I'm going to go back, August 21st, we provided information on aligning continuous improvement, a common understanding of effective schools. September 11th, we did a workshop on evidence of improvement specific to assessment. And some of that information is in that folder that you get at every board meeting except at workshops. October 16th, we did a presentation on college and career academies and pathways. Then we did another workshop on October 30th on the strategic plan of action. Then on November 13th of 2023, we did Evidence of Improvement Map Growth Interim Assessment Results, if you can remember that, at the North High Viking Center. November 27th, we provided summary of summative assessment results. We have also at the North High Viking Center. Also on November 27th, we provided another update on the college and career academies and pathways. Also on the 27th, we provided, of November, we provided a receipt of report for high school on-track for the 22-23 end of year. We also provided on that day another receipt of reports for attendance and absenteeism, 2022-2023. Then in January, January 22nd, we provided a receipt of reports for another graduation follow-up for the class of 2022. January 22nd, we also provided information on the Advanced Placement Annual Report. We did another workshop in January 29th, back in this room, on the Elliott and the Learning Framework. February 8th, 2024, we provided yet another college and career academies and pathways update. And then today, we provide information on Evidence of Effective Schools, June 10th, 2024. This doesn't stop with our information. At our July meeting, we provide, we will be providing information around graduation rates and also some behavior information. So we committed to providing as much information as we could as part of the school year and we'll continue this throughout the next few years. But I just wanted to kind of remind everybody where we've been and what information we've shared and where we're going to continue that exploration through Evidence of Effective Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, now turning it back over to Ms. Kramer and Mr. Hughes.
Starting off so well, pushed my button at the wrong time, my apologies. Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, Interim Superintendent Ray, and members of the board. As Mr. Ray shared, we, in August, talked about our plan of alignment to a single continuous school improvement process and all of the efforts that have come along with that. We are continuing to take steps toward evidence of improvement and impact by tightening our alignment of processes and systems to accreditation. Rule 10 requires Nebraska school districts to engage in continuous improvement and as part of that process, we host an external review every five years to receive accreditation. That will happen in 2025. This evening, we'll update you on our ongoing alignment work, systems building and next steps as we pursue evidence of impact relative to our strategic plan goals. So you've seen this slide before, we've been sharing it with you all, with our principals. We had our Principal Institute last week with our district leadership. We keep coming back to this, lever of systems improvement is alignment which depends on behavior and decision-making aligned to a collectively owned vision and strategy. So this slide, you've seen before, in the left-hand column, you see represented where we've been in terms of the continuous improvement and accreditation process in the Omaha Public Schools. On the right are the steps that we're taking to get better at getting better. Systems accreditation is an important next step so that we all, from the classroom to the boardroom, have a common understanding of what makes an effective school. Accreditation is continuous improvement, they're not separate. Aligned meetings for leaders and board members starting on August 21st with a common understanding of effective schools, September 13th, balanced assessment systems and results, and then January 29th, student engagement through the Elliott and the Learning Framework. Today, we'll update you on some key metrics aligned to our strategic plan and our progress on building and refining the necessary improvement systems together. A reminder that accreditation and continuous improvement are aligned within the same process or cycle. The metrics that we're monitoring and collecting evidence of are aligned at our schools and classrooms all the way to this room as part of our strategic plan of action. This slide shows general stability in our attendance. We've included four years because 2020-2021 was the initial year of the strategic plan. And that school year, just as a reminder, was on a 3-2 schedule. We continue to work on attendance and I, I hope that some of the information that Casey's going to share with you today is going to make it easier for our school leaders to work in effective teams to make impact on groups of students by understanding the root causes and intervening more quickly for why students might not be attending. This slide represents the unique student referrals between 2020-2021 and 2023-2024. We are down slightly from 84,018 unique student referrals in 22-23 to 83,333 in 23-24. The academic priority of our strategic plan has a focus for early literacy. The percent of students at or above the 50th percentile has increased from 2021, 2020-2021 and is holding steady in 2023-2024. You'll see that the percentage of students remains the same, though there has been an increase in the total number of students performing at that 50th percentile or grade level this last school year. Middle school map growth is a goal of the strategic plan, measuring the percent of students meeting or exceeding their growth goals. In math, this percentage has increased approximately 10%. And on the right side, you'll see an increase from 28% to 37% in reading. And again, this metric is students at the middle level meeting or exceeding their growth goals. We are also, one of our strategic plan goals is to increase participation in the climate survey. We are not on track with this goal this year. Our participation is down. 2,071 parents have participated. We have been partnering with district communications, bringing research and district communications together. We have a hunch that our families are overburdened by surveys. They come often, maybe not at the right time of year. So we're working to understand when those surveys should happen, streamlining the surveys that the district is putting out and, and the ways in which we're supporting responsiveness and engagement for our families. Susan and I talked with you about the Learning Framework and the Elliott, understanding student engagement. Obviously, student engagement is maybe the most important indicator as we think about its relationship to the other metrics in our strategic plan. When students are cognitively engaged in grade-level work within a safe and supportive learning environment, attendance and behavior are both likely to improve. Our school-based leadership teams have been using the Elliott this second semester, going into classrooms together and working toward a common understanding of the ratings and what evident engagement looks like in all of our classrooms. Some of our school teams have done the observations on paper, taking notes in their calibration as they were learning, and now we have transitioned entirely to the online application. The domains of supportive and well-managed learning environments were areas of relative strength in our district, and we continue to focus on high expectations for learning as a point of emphasis. And so on this slide, you'll see that we have done 882 observations of student engagement in our classrooms since we came and talked to you at, at that last board meeting, board workshop, I'm sorry. But again, many schools were doing them on paper so that they could learn the tool, take notes, and develop their skills in, in understanding. And then up at the top, you can see on a scale that goes through four, what, what areas were very evident or not evident and where we have relative areas of strength and weakness. And this supports our schools in knowing what the right professional learning, what the right coaching is, and what the right next steps are in terms of classroom instruction.
I have a question about the, the scoring, what is the high and the low? So like what we're looking at, out of the 2.68 out of 4.0?
Yes. And so we can see as a district, the number of visits that schools have done, who has done them. There's a lot of different ways that we can cut the data to support teams of teachers and at the school level about what the right next step is for them. This was the plan that we shared with you. We've worked through all of these phases and will be implementing Elliott as an essential metric for improvement in the coming years alongside our Learning Framework. So last Principal Institute, principals dug into the Learning Framework and began aligning their school improvement plans to the strategies within the Learning Framework. Beginning in August, we had our Continuous Improvement Steering Team that met monthly, monthly to self-assess our district, analyze evidence, and then also build the processes that we wanted to use in our schools moving forward. Our principals completed the training for Elliott in Canvas. School-based observers were, were trained, and we've been bringing all of those pieces into our leadership team meetings. And then all schools now will be implementing the Elliott as a measurement of engagement K-12 beginning next school year. The Continuous Improvement Steering Team was convened to ensure that we were collaborating with our schools and school-based staff rather than doing two. It included over 40 leaders from our system, from teachers, OEA representatives, principals, and central office leadership. We want everyone to be a part of building the systems that we're implementing. Our work began in August of last year, and it paused at the candidacy review that we just went through in April, in which we provided a presentation about the implementation of our strategic plan and the continuous improvement processes we have in place. In preparation, again, this team analyzed evidence from 30 key performance standards and began designing the systems that would address the challenges that we discovered in our analysis. From progress monitoring cycles to building improvement science capacity and even prototyping a new school improvement workbook and testing a one-stop-shop data source, this steering team remains essential to our accreditation, improvement, and strategic efforts moving forward. We know that professional learning is an essential support for school improvement. In the same vein as the Continuous Improvement Steering Team, Dr. Canyon Chisholm pulled together a professional learning work group that was similarly comprised to develop a vision for adult learning in our district. We've developed OPS standards for professional learning, plans for developer trainings, and an implementation of Canvas and Canvas Catalog as our adult learning management system district-wide. This year, all of our professional learning days beginning in February, including Articulation Day, last week's Principal Institute, were all hosted via Canvas. This platform will become the hub for all learning from curriculum-based professional learning to networked groups and even online-only opportunities. And this slide represents the implementation plan for Canvas through the fall of 2025. Earlier this year, we shared the Learning Framework with you. This resource supports teachers and teams building a learning culture and experiences that will support the portrait of a graduate and meet the goals of our strategic plan. As school teams are implementing their school improvement plan, they need to regularly look at student data alongside evidence from the, from the classroom and artifacts of implementation. We've been saying, if it's not happening in the classroom, it's not happening. This graphic details the way effective instructional leaders in the Omaha Public Schools can leverage individual, school, and district tools to support their improvement efforts. Through professional learning and principal supervisor guidance, we are helping school leadership teams determine the right visit tool and the right evidence to support their school improvement strategies. So on this screen, which is sort of the other side of this graphic, we illustrate what the individual supports that every teacher should have, what we're looking at, at the school level to understand the experience of students across our classrooms, and then what we're doing at the district level that are non-negotiable. And so here you'll see those must-do and can-dos with a little more detail here. And we spent a good part of our Principal Institute supporting our instructional leaders in understanding for the culture in my building, for what I'm seeing in my data and in classrooms, what are the right next steps for us to build capacity and collect aligned to our problems and practices and to the data that we're trying to achieve in our school improvement plans. We have also, across this last year, grown and refined our elementary and secondary support team visits. Using a common agenda, principal supervisors engage school leaders, TLCs, and other supports to check in on school improvement plan implementation. The team visits classrooms, conducts Elliott's, and reviews evidence to support principals and teams in planning their next steps. Those will extend to all of our secondary schools beginning in 2024-2025 so that K-12, we have a common systems implementation check on school improvement plans that includes two visits per semester for every school in our district. Our assessment team has been supporting school leaders and academic data reps in understanding the power of data intersections, answering questions like, how many of the chronically absent students have been suspended? How many of those students are on grade level? Can we see the students by EL language level? Who are these students? In the past, in order to answer these questions and get to the root cause of an underperformance, it required time, significant work and ability and Excel, doing pivot tables. So how could we make it easier for our school leaders and leadership teams to do the next right thing? How can we see key metrics around the student? So we've been exploring this idea of just-in-time and school improvement 360. If we know early or in real-time, we can intervene more quickly. We are laser-focused on attendance, behavior, engagement, and on-track. As we've shared before, this year, we established our common measurable definition of on-track, and we now have a dashboard that allows schools to respond just-in-time. We are also iterating further on this idea while improving our intervention indicator dashboard that was created as part of the strategic plan. So our research team, assessment team, and thank you so much to Janet and Melissa who are sitting back here, have worked tirelessly to get to what we're going to show you here today, which I think will be a huge support to our school leaders in terms of just-in-time data in their school improvement processes. And with that, I will turn it over to Casey to talk through what we've been working on.
Thank you. As we switch over to my computer to show you a, a tool that's in development, right? This is in the very early stages of development. You may remember us talking about the Intervention Indicator Report at a board meeting in the fall. That report is accessible from our building leaders all the way up to our teachers, right? So kind of everyone in our school building. That report currently houses a lot of individual student data. It brings together lots of metrics on, on one line for an individual student, so it kind of brings everything together. But what we determined, as we talked to schools, as we talked to users, is that, one, it was too slow, right? It kind of just wasn't reactive enough for, for our environment as we understand it today. You know, we kind of expect to click and we expect that information to come back at us very quickly. The other thing is, with so much information, with so many students, sometimes it's difficult to get to that next step, right? It's difficult to see those things that you need to take action on. And so what we wanted to do is redesign that intervention indicator and bring it up a couple of levels. Bring it up to the level that a classroom teacher or a building principal could start to focus on groups of students and see the intersection of the information. And I think as we go through this kind of quickly, you'll be able to see how this information on a spreadsheet for a student might be difficult to understand, but as you graphically put it together, as you start to see these student groups and see how they interact, that next step becomes a little clearer to some degree.
So if you can imagine that you're on a school improvement leadership team and you're getting ready to have your weekly meeting about where you are in terms of progress, what, what's working, what's not, for whom, what do we need to do next in that plan-do-check-act cycle? In the past, an assistant principal or a dean would have to pull data, bring it to the table, do some work around it to make it digestible to the folks at the table, and then there would have to be even some work around bringing those pieces together. So then, much of the time was maybe spent making sense of it or even getting the data versus actually gaining some understanding of the why and knowing who these students are and what they need and what's right for them to do tomorrow or the next week. And so that's where we hope that this is going to live. It's going to live in school leadership teams, in PLC teams, so that folks can move more quickly and be more responsive to what students need within their school improvement work.
So what you see on the screen is, is just kind of a sample set of students. It's kind of based at a middle school, but we would have this kind of at each level. And each level might look a little bit different based on the needs of the elementary students or the, the most important metric at that level. But to some degree, the metrics that we need to focus on are, are similar across all levels. So middle school is a good kind of middle ground for us to look at. On the screen, you'll see attendance, behavior, and in this case, on-track. These kind of key metrics kind of give us a, a 360 view of what's going on with students. It is not everything that you could look at, but it is enough to really give you a good understanding of what's going on with your student population. This would update nightly, and so it would be information really as of the day before. And so any new attendance data, any new discipline data, any new assessment information would be included in this update. So you can easily get a look at your school. So in this fictitious school, you can see that, that they've got about 35% of their students that are chronically absent, right? So in this attendance section here, we can see those chronically absent students in that population. We can also see we've got about 28% of our students who are not chronically absent, but they aren't kind of striving for 95, right? They're not, they're not doing really well in terms of their attendance. And then another 37% who are doing really well, right? Missing less than 5% of, of their school year. For behavior, we could, we could kind of target a number of different metrics, but for this example, we use days suspended. So in this, in this school, we see we've got about 8% of students who have been suspended for five or more days across the school year, about 10% who have less than five days of suspension, right? But do have some, some suspension. And then finally, students with no suspension, and that's about, you know, 82% of the school's population. And then finally, for on-track, we, we're, we're using GPA in this perspective. At the high school level, we would be using that, that very explicit on-track metric, right? Where we're looking at the number of credits a student needs, the, the very specific type of credit the student needs in that school year in order to successfully graduate in four years. But in this case, just using GPA as kind of a, an understanding of where a student might sit academically. And at the middle school level, how it might prepare them to pass courses and, and, and get to graduation in high school. So we can see we've grouped it into students that are less than 2.0, right? It's kind of being off-track, students that are at-risk between 2 and less than 3.0 GPA, and then those students that are on-track at a 3.0 GPA or greater. So with this, you can get a good sense of your school. But the power comes when you can start to look at these different groups and see how the, the other metrics are, are interacting with that. So let's say we want to focus on our, our off-track students, right? So let's look at every student in this, this school that has a GPA that's less than 2.0. So if we click on this perspective, you'll see our attendance and our behavior graphs shift. You can see chronic absenteeism now goes from, what was it, 35 or 36% up to 67%. So what we can already notice is that our off-track group, those students that have that low GPA, are also chronically absent, right? About 70% of them. We can also see that our suspensions have jumped up, right? From 7 and 10% up to 26% with five or more days, 24% with some suspensions, right? But less than five days. So again, as I, as I click back, we can see our whole school getting that information. And then if we go to our off-track students, we can see that change. Now let's say we, we really want to drill down, right? We want to focus on a specific set of students. So we can maybe come over here and say, well, let's look at the students who are also chronically absent, right? So we can click on this part of the graph, and we can see, again, the information changes a little bit, kind of narrows our student countdown. Up here in the top corner, you'll see we started with 720 students. If you're at a school and you're, you're trying to work on that, what's that next step, 720 students is a lot to take in. But now we're down to 94. Okay, let's also look at those students who have experienced five or more days of suspension in that year. So this is going to get us down to 34 students, right? So we've, we've coordinated our on-track information, our behavior information, our attendance information to find 34 students that maybe have, have the, are struggling the most in these metrics. And from there, we can take, we can click on that number and get to those 34 students. Now from this point, a school team or a leadership team can focus on these 34 students. They can find a strategy and a way to work with these 34 students. It's not every student, right? It's not 720, but we've narrowed it down to that smaller subset of students that can be actionable and that can be focused on. So we'll go back here really quick. I'm going to unselect all of these to get us back to our, our full population. So the other perspective that we can bring to this is looking at all of this information but by any one of our metrics. And so what I'm going to show you is splitting this information by reading level. And by reading level, in this scenario, we're talking about that MAP percentile, that reading percentile. And so what we've done is we've grouped that percentile into a couple of different buckets. So you've got at or above the 50th percentile, which is going to be kind of this lightest blue, right? That's that on-grade level metric. You've got your kind of little bit darker blue, that's going to be from the 25th to the 49th percentile, so kind of approaching grade level, but, but still under that 50th percentile. And then students in the dark blue who are going to have, you know, below a 25th percentile on that MAP reading. So now we can look at this information, our attendance, our behavior, our on-track information, but also bring it back to that core skill of literacy. So we can look at it, how it, how it's divided by the student's MAP percentile score. And again, as we look at this information, we can see some, some things that are not surprising but can help schools focus. So for our on-track group, we can see we have about 70% of them are in that lowest percentile for MAP reading, right? If we go to our attendance group, we can see that about half of our students are in that lowest percentile, that 25th percentile or below for MAP reading. And again, you can start to focus your population. Please.
I think one really valuable piece, not I think one really valuable piece, not only being to take, going from this big picture, drilling down, answering questions in real time, to what is the intervention we need for this group of students? What is the root cause? Also, it challenges some assumptions that we might have about our students. If we look at those students who are chronically absent, not all of them are struggling academically. So if we're trying to understand what is the root cause of this absenteeism, while we're working on engagement in our classrooms, that might not be the right intervention for that 9.2% of students. They're performing relatively well, so what is the reason for their absenteeism? And how do we address that differently? Because that should probably look different than for students who are struggling across the board in all areas. So this slicing really supports us getting to the root cause and having the most appropriate intervention for groups of students, and it avoids some of those assumptions that we may have made about them if we weren't able to see it in this way.
Another good example of that, for instance, is to look at this on-track group, right? So maybe a group of students you wouldn't traditionally worry about. But let's say we want to look at those students who are doing fine from a GPA perspective, but that MAP percentile, that reading percentile is still very low. Again, we can get to that portion of the population. We can see it's 56 students. We can see they don't have, you know, absenteeism like some other students. Their behavior is very low, but they've still got something going on with that literacy, right? So again, getting to that population, and students that might be overlooked, right? That are not necessarily from an attendance perspective or behavior perspective or even passing their classes, but still have that literacy piece that needs to be addressed.
And I think to that point, it's adding to our ability to see where, in our implementation, we have mismatches. If we have students performing at the 25th percentile and are passing all of their classes, then the work that they're doing in our classes aren't maybe necessarily predictive of performance. And so then what do we need to do to raise the expectation in the classroom or support teachers in understanding what grade level work looks like? So it's also generating more questions for instructional leaders to understand about what is the actual problem that we need to solve.
And just as a kind of an overall, you would be able to filter this by any group. You'd be able to slice this by a number of groups. There'd be a lot of options. One of our goals will be to make this simple, but allow for complexity, right? Allow for someone to drill down. I think what we find is that we don't have a lot of time to kind of find those next steps. We've got to be able to get to those quickly. But there are many in our district who really want to drill down once they get there, right? So we've got to have a tool that allows us to quickly get to information, but also lets us drill down a little bit more. Yes?
I'm super impressed with this. Like, I'm just really, really impressed with this. I'm just so excited about the real-time data that our school leadership teams and schools will be able to utilize when they need it, how they need it. Two questions. Is this something that our research team or whoever has developed? Or are we, we relax and stuff? I'm just only asking because I'm just wondering how, but we would be able to make changes for children purposes?
And things that we need to. Sorry, I forgot to click on. Thank you.
Yes, this is currently in development. What you're seeing is a prototype, and we'll be working with our IMS team. But our in-house research team developed this from concept to prototype what you're seeing here today.
Wow. I mean, I know we have some fantastic people, but this just proves it even further. So thanks to everybody that's working on this. And then my second question is, as far as the suspensions, are those just for out-of-school suspensions? Or is that inclusive of in-school as well?
What we've done for the sample here is out-of-school suspensions. But we are still definitely in discussion about exactly what these metrics are going to be. So we need to work with our colleagues in CIS very closely. We also need to work with our schools, right? And really understand, how do we fine-tune this? Again, we want to make it simple. And so, you know, you might have an individual who's very much into that discipline data at their school, and they might want to know everything, right? They might want to know all the way down to, okay, I want to know suspensions in-school, out-of-school. I want to split it by every way. But what we have to do is kind of find that metric that is enough to simply say, hey, this is something to look out for. So we may actually not use suspensions. We could potentially just use behavioral events, right? So just talk about if you've got one or more behavioral events, right? So even kind of bring it up a level from the resolution just to that behavioral event.
And thank you also, Suzanne, for making the comment about the assumption piece, because it's so easy just to make that assumption. But just at the click of a button, you can certainly confirm that assumption or see that is completely different than what your initial thought was. So I appreciate you making that point. But thank you for allowing me to interrupt and ask you a couple of questions and give you all kudos.
I think to Casey's point about the entry point of simplicity or multiple entry points, depending on where teams are, even if it was at the very beginning view that Casey had, where we could see how many of our chronically absent students relative to suspensions, even if we're just looking at how many of our off-track students have an absentee issue. That discussion and being able to narrow down and narrow down, that is still getting us further than where we've been. And so then, as we learn, and our teams learn, and they're going to be even learning from what they're getting back from the metrics when they implement something and there is an improvement or not, right? Then they'll become more adept, and we can adapt this tool for our users as well. And so we plan to take feedback from principals and their teams about how to make it better. One example, I asked Casey to add that ELPA level so that we can see. Maybe we want to understand if we have some students who are stagnating in their English language development, what's happening to their attendance? Or what's happening to on-track? So can we see those pieces? And so we hope that even if we use it at this basic level, looking at two metrics together at a time, will still be more efficient and be impacting students in a little bit different way than we had in the past, even without the slicing.
Assuming that these students have been with us since kindergarten, probably, or first grade, and then we're going on and on. And we're talking about, now, they get to certain levels, and I have to assume that there have been interventions all along, even though we're not seeing the growth. So could you address that part of what the interventions have been throughout the years with them? I mean, they can do summer school, they can do group activities, whatever. Can you tell us what all those are?
Okay.
Pretty much, just so we understand how they get there. We assume they all have an intervention, and we're looking out for every student, and they all are coming along. And if they aren't, we want to be sure that they are.
Absolutely. So in the Omaha Public Schools, as a large system, we have the privilege of a waterfront of interventions that we have available for our students. Like you shared, we have summer learning, we have tutoring, we have online tutoring, we have small groups based on skills-based needs in our elementary instructional framework. We have reading classes. We have all of these interventions. I think what we need to, though, understand is what is the right intervention for the needs that a particular group or individual student? What that right intervention or what that right next step is? We aren't always able to be responsive when something isn't working. Or maybe we have assumed that it's working, or we don't know if it's not, or we don't know why it's not, right? So to your point, we have a lot of things in place. Our data would suggest that it's not working for every student. And so we have to do a better job of understanding, for whom is this an improvement? And then taking that next right step. And if it's not an improvement for these students, what is something else that we need to do? So that's what we're hoping that this will support our school improvement teams in getting to, is understanding what is working, what's not working, and why, and for what students.
And probably the new teachers would benefit from this totally. Where the more experienced ones probably know what they're doing with their interventions and how they're bringing the students along, and they know what they need. I gotta hope they do. And they care so much about their students and their progress. So I mean, that's the number-one thing that they care about, and so I would think they'd be all into that.
Thank you, Spencer. I just want to reiterate what Dr. Holman said. Amazing, I mean, truly amazing. Having just gotten out of an OSERS meeting and seeing what our future contributions might look like, just in the parking lot, trademarking this amazing program. And maybe we can make our OSERS contributions with all of our subscriptions, but that's a different point. My question was, who has access, going even back to the chart you were at, because this one's way too confusing? But you said that school leadership team would be using this. Makes total sense. They know what they're doing, so on and so forth. Quick question. You come up with a list of 34 students like you did on your first iteration. Do we anticipate that that's a school leadership team issue? Or do we anticipate, and I know it's all information, but as a teacher in the classroom, to the extent that you have determined or figured something out, do the teachers find out, or do they have access to this? I don't have an endgame answer. I'm just curious about how we use it that way.
So currently, our dashboards have access based on role group. And so members of school leadership teams, assistant principals, deans, you know, there's access based on that. We're really working toward a reality where teachers are members of our school improvement leadership teams, because teachers are the most important improvers. And so while maybe the upper-level access to every child kind of data isn't something we want every teacher to have, we want to ensure at every one of our schools that teachers are on that school leadership team. And then, if that team is functioning how it should be, then there is a conduit to the grade level or to the PLC, where if Casey and I are in a science PLC, we maybe share some information. Maybe we're not on the school leadership team, but we're getting information from our leadership team about these 26 students who are with us. And we then are able to dig into our own classroom data or the student work. So one thing one of our principal supervisors shared was, I could see how this really helps us focus in on what student work we want to look at to see, even closer to the student, what it is we need to do instructionally. And already, some of our high schools are using our on-track dashboard in this way, where they're kind of slicing the data. They're getting down to the number of students who are missing one credit or less on this week during the school year. And then this group of five teachers has a relationship with that student. And so I'm going to make sure I talk to that student in the hallway. Let's work on your missing assignments. Do you need to have some tutoring support? What can we do, right? And so already, we're seeing that being leveraged both at the leadership team level and at the teacher level in our schools.
So following up on Ms. Sirdmer's question or point. So any data system, the data coming out is only ever as good as the data going in and the quality of it. So now, a year into this, obviously, whenever there's a new implementation, there's going to be hesitancy, there's going to be resistance, there's going to be people questioning, why are we doing this? Why are we changing? So I guess, what type of buy-in are you seeing from teachers and staff and school support teams? And are we seeing uniformity in the data going in across our, you know, 87 campuses so that we can compare schools to schools? Or are there still kind of some hiccups in implementation there?
We still have work to do in uniformity of entry in some metrics. I would say that, and that's ongoing. I would say that these metrics, attendance, behavior, engagement, and on-track, we have common definitions of. Those are strategic plan metrics. They're connected to accountability. They're sort of the core things in our core business that we're measured for, right? And engagement is the one that cuts across all and is going to support the improvement of those other three. And so I think the quality of the cleaning of the data and all of that, that's ongoing. Support and training that I know our SCS colleagues work on, on the behavior side. And obviously, assessment folks, we have really good protocols around ensuring that the data is quality going in. Do you have anything to add, like on the backend from building it, that you would want to say about that?
I think the metrics that we're looking at here certainly are pretty sound, right? There's always, you know, something in the data that doesn't make sense. But exactly, the attendance data, the behavior data, our MAP data, our on-track information, we've been working very hard to get that calculating as good as we possibly can, right? There's a lot in that, lots of credits, lots of moving parts and transcripts. But yes, I think our biggest hurdle here will be giving everybody the look that they want, right? And getting to that place where, hey, my school is a very high EL population, and we have a lot of newcomers, and so I want to be able to slice by these more obscure metrics. But for my school, that makes the most sense. And so we're going to have to find that sweet spot of bringing in some of that information, which maybe has less validity across the board, but still giving it to those schools that need it and want to drill down in that way.
And I think just from that, you asked about buy-in as well. And when we first started working on the on-track dashboard, we got to that common definition. We wanted it to be that we could intervene just in time, all of these sorts of things when we were working on it. And we put out a prototype, and it was imperfect. And there were things that we didn't even know were not quite right. But what we invited schools to do was use it. Tell us how it's working for you, how it's not. And there were folks who said, well, this data isn't right, so I'm not using this thing. And so we were able to sort of have that conversation around, no, collectively, we're testing an idea. So we're trying to model the science of improvement, even in our own work that we're wanting our schools to do, right? It's imperfect. Share your feedback. We'll iterate, and we'll make it better. We're in this together. We want to know how you're using it and how we can make it better. It'll be the same thing with this. There are things that we don't know, might be incorrect, or things that we need to make better. As people use it, we have mechanisms to collect their feedback. We'll be engaging them, and we'll keep making it better all along the way.
Thank you so much.
I just have a very quick question. Reiterate what everyone said. This is really refreshing, and it looks pretty user-friendly even to me. So except this one. I don't like this one. I'm wondering, though, is like test data able to be? Or is it incorporated in? Like, can you look at MAP scores, NCAS scores? Are those any of the categories that can also be sliced, if you will?
Yeah, definitely. So I'm going to, at risk of confusing, I'm going to try to explain this metric. Because I do think, once you understand what it is showing, it does give you another visual that really helps you understand where students are at.
So the previous one, just to contextualize, was groups of students. So we're looking, we've zoomed all the way out, and we want, okay, we have 720 students in our school. We want to kind of whittle it down. What do we need? And we get to 24. We know what the next right thing is for those 24, or those 50, or whatever it is. What this is going to show us is individual students, where they are relative to this confluence of metrics and kind of where they are. So that's more of the purpose of this one.
That makes sense. Okay, and one more quick question, just overall. Is this tool called Just-in-Time? Is that what this one is? I'm confused on what is Just-in-Time data? Or is that a tool? Is that this tool?
So I think the data is what we're looking to be Just-in-Time, right?
I don't know if we have a name for this.
So I think the name is probably 360. You know, it's our intervention indicator, but it is now giving us a more of a 360 perspective. So I think that's the idea, matching that with our SIP 360, I think makes sense. It is cohesive with that work, and this will be a tool for that work. So to your question about assessment data, so this graph tries to show us kind of a quadrant report. So on your Y-axis is your attendance rate. So students that are closer to the top of this graph have a better attendance rate, right? So 100% attendance rate would be at the very top. Students at the bottom would have a low attendance rate. Across the bottom is that MAP percentile in reading, right? So the farther to the left you are, the higher your MAP percentile in reading, right? So we've got this cut at the 50th percentile. Again, that's kind of that grade level metric, right? If you're at the 50th- Again, that's kind of that grade level metric, right? If you're at the 50th percentile, you're, you're probably pretty close to grade level, at least nationally. And we've also got it cut by that chronic absenteeism, right? So, so 10% absent. So everybody to, you know, above this line and to the right of this line has a, a reading MAP score that's on grade level and is not chronically absent, right? Additionally, this is colored by OnTrack, right? So this is colored by the students who have a 3.0 GPA or better, and kind of this gray. The students with a 2.0 to 3.0, kind of in the yellow, and then the students less than a 2.0 in the dark blue. It's also symbolized by the behavior information. So if you have a cross or, or an X, you have a suspension day in your, in your year. If you've just got a circle, you have no suspensions, right? So when you've got all your students on this, it is a little overwhelming, right? But for instance, if we were to just click on our OnTrack group, that'll kind of lessen the load, you can see, again, they're all the same color, right? Because they're OnTrack, they've got that GPA. You can see the vast majority of them are above that chronic absenteeism line, right? Meaning that they've got relatively good attendance, looking at that, that chronic absenteeism. You can also see a lot of them are, you know, to the right of this 50th percentile, but you do have a lot of students that are to the left, right? You do have students still that have that literacy piece that maybe is not there, but have attendance, and they've got that, got that OnTrack, or they're passing their courses. So this gives you kind of a visual representation. And from here, you can start to look at these individuals, right? You can start to hover on them and understand, okay, who, who are we talking about here, right? If you've got some outliers, right, you can go check out, who's this outlier, right? Who's this student that visually is an outlier to this dataset that we're looking at? So again, I think this is a different picture. This will probably be one where everybody looks at it, and they're like, oh, that's too much, right? But for those users that really want to drill down a little bit, those users that, that get to that perspective through training, I think it will be a view that, that allows them to kind of see a little bit more than just those bar graphs. And I would imagine we'd probably have some, some additional tabs in this dashboard, one that maybe brings all of our schools up for kind of a district leadership perspective, where we can see these things across every school, maybe one at the district level, right? Maybe not this at the district level, right? It would, that would be a lot of, yeah. But some of these other pieces, that we can see it at this high level, but then schools can also see it at their school level. And then, in this case, down to those student levels, once you get to the school.
Could we talk a little bit about the absences? I don't know how huge that rate is, or is not. Is it more, is it happening more at one school than another school? Is it better? What are we doing about those? I mean, that's a huge concern, even if it's elementary, and they're out three days. You know, already, you're panicked, or what happened to them? Where are they? Have they called in? Have we talked to them? What are we doing to follow up? Thank you.
So our chronic absenteeism rate is 40%, which is on that slide, and we have work to do in that area. The absenteeism is more acute at the secondary level, at middle and high, of course. We have a team of SSLs who works with schools to support them. Every school has an attendance team with weekly meetings, looking at those metrics, following up, home visits, phone calls home, connections to resources, all of those things are in place. What this is allowing us to be able to see, hopefully, is maybe a deeper understanding of what's causing absences, or the relationship between what's happening in the classroom and the absence, or suspensions and absence, those kinds of things, to be able to intervene more quickly and more accurately with students. Our schools and our Student Community Services Department is working tirelessly, as our school districts around the country, to curb chronic absenteeism post-pandemic. We're just working tirelessly to, to do that work. And I think even more support around family engagement. We currently have a team of folks who are working together to understand the experience of families with the Omaha Public Schools. And from that, those interviews and that understanding, that could even support us engaging with families and understanding what they need, and our communication and our interaction and trust-building with them, that can support these efforts as well.
Mrs. Krackey just handed around the room there a report that was produced for, that answers some of those questions that you, it breaks it down by school. And it was provided to the board, I think, in November-ish, but I had a printed copy, too. And then we'll do the same for 2324.
Absences, and we have parents working nights, and we have all these things happening. We know that. But how are we going to get around that with our parents and our families? Do we have any kind of a plan, or thought about what we want to do?
So we'll provide more information on our, any changes to attendance at a later date. At this point, we have a few more slides to go through on, on this as well.
Could we change over to my slides? Thank you so much. Right. So, kind of bringing this all back around, we, again, have been working with steering teams, groups from all levels and all parts of our district to begin to build these systems, make things easier, and ensure that our schools have, and leaders have what they need to do the work of improvement. From Canvas to articulating what are those classroom visit protocols that we want to be using, to this work around School Improvement 360, we're really working to build a system that gets better at getting better. And so in April, we had Cognia come and do our visit for candidacy, and we provide, provided evidence aligned to all 30 standards, ratings for that, and so forth. And we are pleased to share that our system will be a candidate for systems accreditation with Cognia. So in 2025, our external review for accreditation will happen, where a team of folks from all over will come, and they'll do board interviews, principal interviews, they'll go to classrooms, they'll spend three days with us to look at evidence of effective schools and systems in our district. And so these results will detail the strengths and pain points that we have in the Omaha Public Schools, which will then set us up for understanding our current state and launch us into our next strategic plan. And that report on our external review will be available in July 2025. And so our key takeaways, thank you so much for your time this evening, is that we are, in the Omaha Public Schools, a candidate for systems accreditation. Our district will host the comprehensive external review in April of 2025. Canvas catalog, our improvement days, School Improvement 360, which we showed you tonight, our high-quality instructional materials, Elliott implementation, our elementary and secondary support team visits, all represent systems improvement efforts that we've undertaken in the last year. And we, beyond the last year, but some, many of them are the last year. And we will provide updates on graduation rates and behavior data at the July 15th Board of Education meeting. Thank you so much. If you have any additional questions, we'll take them.
Thank you so much. Do we have any additional questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdmurg?
You probably told us this, but you're, you're working on the, what you called School Improvement 360, the, the mixing and masking, slicing and dicing. Are you planning on rolling it out with just a couple of schools first to sort of test it, and/or what, what is the rollout schedule for that?
So working with colleagues in IMS currently to kind of create our data sources for this. One of the big things we want to do, again, is speed it up, right? So our, our intervention indicator is pretty slow. So they're kind of undertaking kind of a reworking of that data. Our goal is by the beginning of the school year, but I think that's pretty aggressive. I think it will be, it will be tough to have this in the place where we're really comfortable with putting it out by the beginning of the school year. But we're going to set that as our goal, and then work from there. We definitely, I think, are going to, we're going to, we're going to put it out, once we're comfortable with it, we would put it out to the entire system. We have to, to some degree, be okay with it not being perfect. Again, as Suzanne talked, it's really important to get that feedback. It's, you know, we have to risk maybe somebody seeing something that's not quite right, but knowing that we will improve it, right? If you, if you let us know, we'll improve it. So I think that's our goal, is to get it out to everybody, once we're good with it, and then, and then work from there.
Mr. Teelen?
Thank you, Mr. Head. I guess first, just thank you. This is a really incredible step toward making us actually data-driven decision-makers, where we have access to the data, we need to make the decisions in real time. And the, the focus should continue to be as a tool for those active decisions. But I'm also wondering if this will provide us longitudinal data on students?
I'll start, and then you can correct me. Does that work? So the intention is not that it's longitudinal. The intention is that it's just in time. We have assessment dashboards, we have attendance behavior, we have unique-tometric dashboards that give that deeper, more longitudinal view. The intention and purpose of this is for just-in-time improvement work.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
On slide nine, I just had a couple of questions. Yeah. And so when you look at F, the well-managed learning is really high, and then when you look at digital learning, it's low. And I just wondered, I know it's a sample school, but if, if we're a one-to-one district, shouldn't that number appear a little bit higher?
This is our actual data.
Oh, okay.
So I'll just clarify that. So the, this, this indicator is about the integration of the digital learning tool and its application to real world. It's not just about use. Very evident has quite a higher threshold than just, are the students using the iPad? And so that's where you might see, and that's a really school-dependent, classroom-dependent sort of thing, and this is an aggregate across our district. And so these, as principal supervisors and I, and I think folks even in curriculum, as we've been looking at this, this is pretty consistent. I, I feel like we're pretty well-calibrated on this, that yeah, we know, in a lot of our classrooms, we have students who are compliant, they're supportive learning environments. We may not be engaging them cognitively in grade-level work. And so this has really pointed out where we need to focus our work, and these results are corroborated. We're, we're all kind of seeing the same thing, and that's kind of been the point of this semester, is getting tighter around what does very evident of high expectations look like, or what does very evident of you, of quality use of digital tools look like, so that we are all having the same conversation about quality. And so this points to, at the school level, what teachers, teams, and leaders might need to do around engagement as they think about professional learning and supports next year.
And that goes into my next question. So the 882 number at the bottom, so that, that's a good number. And if we are going to be improving, should that number go up, 200, 300? And on the other side of that, it could be good as well, if the number goes down, because the teachers are getting that development, they're managing their classes much more effectively, so they don't, they don't need the additional observation.
So I, one thing to be really clear about is, the tool is for us to be a learning organization. And so this is a way for principals to understand engagement, and teams and teachers to improve. This number should go up by thousands and thousands of teachers next year. So we've asked all of our schools to do at least two Elliott observations for every teacher in the district next year. And we have some schools who have taken to this tool, they love it so much, it's filling in some missing pieces for them, that they're training and building peer-to-peer networks, where teachers are observing one another, and they're building their professional communities around it. Or principals will say, gosh, we really, we're struggling, as we talk about those intersections, we, we see lots of exclusionary things happening in this math class, or, or this grade level, what's happening? Let's go look at engagement. And so we're going to really focus that Elliott effort, then beyond the two baseline, to focus on those improvement efforts in pockets where we know we need support. And so principals are already seeing the value of this, and we're seeing teachers come together around it. And you don't have to be an administrator to be an observer, you just have to be trained.
Ms. Krackey?
What I liked about this is that you aren't expecting perfection, you are expecting growth. And that makes all the people feel better. You know, if you start out with, this is the way it is, well, you know, they may be defeated, but it seems like you're going for growth, and that will make everybody happy. So I think it'll be very successful.
Mr. Teelen?
I think I've lost my question. Yeah, sorry, I lost track of it.
You're good. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, we're seeing none. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you. And if we have nothing else for the good of the order, that will conclude our meeting for the evening, and we will be adjourning at 7:08 PM. Thank you very much.